Thank you. And of course, before we open up the City Council meeting, we have a public hearing on the municipal aid fund, this is for some street paving, the two streets that we're talking about, intersection of Highway 460 at Payne's, Nancy Bullerheart, and the intersection of Highway 460 at Nance's Trace. Are there any comments or that will be made by the public? If not, then propose just this public hearing. Now, if you want to stand, call the committee board. At this time, we have a word of silence.
Thank you. We'll ask Councilman Mark Showalter if he would leave us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A reminder that we're here to conduct a business for the city of Georgetown here on December the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Again, we want you are here to the code of conduct throughout this business session. And at this time, we will continue to follow the agenda as written. So at this time, we'll have roll call. Madam Clerk?
Here.
Mr. Polk and Brent?
Here.
Mr. Comley?
Here.
Mr. Hamper?
Present.
Mr. Hamper?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Thank you. I would need at this time a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Brent.
Our second name.
Second made by Ms. Tackett. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Councilor, you should have received the receipts of check register. If you have received that, please raise your hand. Thank you. Let the record reflect that all that are in attendance have received it. At this time, we have public comments. We remind you about public comments. You will have four minutes to come to state your business. And with this council, we, Madam Clerk will also time you. When you get to three minutes, she will let you know. Then, when your four-minute allotment time comes up, she will alert you again. And we ask that at that time, if you will please take your seat and be mindful so we can be respectful of others who would like to bring their concerns to this council. I don't, is your list?
Mark?
Is your list over there?
I don't think anybody signed up.
Okay, so no one signed up for public comments. So next would be the event is the, first one is the Martin King Community March. Is someone here for about that?
It's possibly John Douglas.
Okay, so we'll move on and go to Mayor's Comments. And from the Mayor's Comments, a couple of things here. The farmer's market, they're updating, putting the final touches on it. They're doing some striping as well as some other black topping and getting it all short end. And a timeline, they're hoping to be having taken that fence down in the back and allow some parking. I'm, they're saying that as soon as possible. So I'm not going to give you an exact time because we don't know. And I don't want to give you a time to say it's going to be done this week, and it's not done this week. So as soon as that's done, we'll let you know. But I would say, you know, make an educated guess, within two weeks, this should be, that parking lot should be open till people can come down and park. I'm sure the business people of Georgetown would love that avenue to be able to do that. So, that being said, um, the, I want to give a, a shout out to the public works. If you went downtown and see the decorations, and also with the county working on this, it really is spectacular. And they do such a good job. And you know, sometimes you don't give them enough credit. But when people come to our town and you talk with them in the streets, they mention all over and over and over just how inviting Georgetown is. And that's part of it, is the fact that, you know, we want to do that. So hats off to them. Also, hats off to Megan, Millard, Debbie, and Patrick, and Annie Fryman. They put together a float, a city float, which I had a part to sit on my throne, I mean, sit on the, I had to sit on there with my, with my dog Gracie and, and Millie, and we enjoyed ourselves. And probably one of the biggest and probably the best parade I've seen in a long time. It was very festive for this time of year, but I want to give hats off to our city employees who put that together. And, I mean, they did it within a week. And I'll tell you what, you look like, it looks like something that a professional person would have done. They're not going to get paid no more money for that, but I do want to say thank you very much for that. Swearing in ceremonies will be this Sunday, which will be December the fifteenth for the newly elected council. It will be at two o'clock at the Inser Resource Learning Center on the campus of Georgetown College. And this is open to the public. So if you want to venture in, see them swearing in, you may come at that time. Next, on my Mayor's Comments, is the executive order for the miscellaneous boards and commission appointments. So, Councilor, you have received a list of about thirty-one appointments that I had to make. Unless you want me to read those individually?
I'm going to give you a motion, Mayor.
Okay. All right, motion is made to accept those recommendations by Ms. Tackett, second by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the executive order approving their miscellaneous board and commission appointments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Next, we have a presentation with Republic quarterly, excuse me, presentation with Republic, the quarterly update. So we have Tim Ward here and Todd's here with them. And they were here, I think, in, what was it, Jan, what was it? It was, it was-
It was March or April.
March or April. And so they're going to give an update that. And they're going to also tell you, I know that some council here and myself have received some concerns over some issues that has occurred. I've been in contact with them. They've been updating me on those issues. They're going to tell you what those issues were, are, and what they're doing to correct those issues at this time. All right? Gentlemen?
Evening, everybody. So let's, let's start right there. During the last three, four weeks, we had some various different staffing challenges outside of our core group that takes care of the Georgetown area. We made a choice to try to consolidate our routing here to be able to get our four routes done with three people. That was a bad choice. It was well-intended, thinking we could help ourselves. But the reality is, is you needed everything to go absolutely perfect every single day for that to happen, and life doesn't work that way. So as soon as we figured it out, we stopped that. We've brought in extra help. We're having extra people trained. We brought in three different people from outside of, of our market to give us some extra support, to not pull people from the markets we need to. You know, we saw a pretty good run of some really solid service. And in the last three, four weeks, we allowed that to slip. We're not going to hide it. We're going to own it. We're going to explain to you guys that we made a really poor choice. And as soon as we figured out what that choice was, we changed it immediately. The change in all honesty happened this morning because it takes a little time to get people to come in from out of the area to get here. We should have ourselves caught up, and we should not see this again. So we're, we're a hundred percent planned on starting right there in saying, that is not the service that we expect of ourselves. That is not the service that our residents in Georgetown deserve. We're not going to hide from it. We're going to own it, and we're going to make sure we fix it. So obviously, we're standing up here first saying, we are sorry for the choice we made. It was not a good choice. I know it was well-intended. I know the intent was we have a lot of help surrounding us, and we thought we could pull it off. Shouldn't have done it. And that's where it's kind of leading to. So let me add some kind of statistics to that, right? The last time we were here, we've been adding how many calls we've been getting. We added the specific number to Georgetown. So our, our market, our business unit we refer to, which is all of the Georgetown market, Lexington into Frankfurt, down to Stanford, our entire market from, really from July through just the end of November, we received a little over thirty-four thousand phone calls in total, right? For every various reason that we have, whether it's wanting service, adding service, changing service, wanting to understand their bill.
Make a payment.
Making a payment, everything, including, hey, I think you missed me, all of them. To the Georgetown specific number, it was one thousand four hundred and fourteen calls, right? I'm assuming not every single call from a Georgetown person came in. But we actually saw a pretty good rise in the use of that number, which is good. Of those fourteen hundred calls, six hundred and twenty-three were labeled as a service call. I need service. Can I add service? Can I change my service? You missed my service. Anything, right? Of those, four hundred and twenty-seven were put in as what's called a miss in our system, okay? Of those, just about half of them, two hundred and fourteen were same-day worry calls. Somebody called in and said, hey, you missed me. We just hadn't been there yet. That left two hundred and thirteen that were ones that, whether they weren't out when we went by, doesn't matter. We didn't get them, right? The trick with that, obviously, is eighty-eight percent of those happened in the last three and a half weeks. That's clearly our problem. You know, we, in that same amount of timeframe to put it in context, in that same timeframe, we serviced about four hundred and forty-eight thousand cans. In that same timeframe, we're talking about these calls. So in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge number, but it's not an acceptable number. And my concern, obviously, is that happened over the last three and a half, four weeks, right? And that's, that's not okay. That's not acceptable. It was in certain pockets. We know where they were. We've got them fixed. And as we're adding people, making sure people are trained, and making sure backup people are trained, you'd see that from time to time when somebody's on vacation. We had a great person running our Georgetown area, and he actually took a promotion, which is a great thing, right? But he won't always be in the Georgetown market. So we have him training the person taking over so he can pass on the knowledge that he has. But you see those gaps. So we need to be better at training our extra people, putting ourselves in a better position from there. But again, what we're seeing is a good increase in using the Georgetown specific number, which gives us a little more focus on what they're calling for. Until about three and a half weeks ago, we had a really, really strong track record of getting people taken care of. Then we figured out our problem, and we have eliminated the problem. To say it's fixed, we were able to put everybody a hundred percent in place today. So I'm not going to sit here and say it's fixed. What I'm going to tell you is everybody's giving me an update every single day until I've got confidence that it's taken care of the right way.
Mayor, do you want us to wait until their presentation is over before we make any comments?
You can do that, yeah.
Wait or do it now?
Whatever you prefer. We're here to be open and honest.
This is pertinent to the last three and a half weeks. Would it be possible, and maybe you did it, if there are blips like this, this has been going on for three and a half weeks, and I think all of our calls have shown that things have been awry for three and a half weeks. Was the public made aware through the app or on the website that you're two drivers down, and you've had mechanical errors, and you're trying to fix it? I mean, or was this a communication drought?
Yeah. What would happen is they would get, you know, if you had a, if you had a route in a single day that had nine hundred stops on it, right? They would have a guy get a certain apartment, and another guy get a certain apartment, and another guy get a certain part. And then they would figure out late that, shoot, we got seven hundred ninety-seven of those eight hundred and fifty stops, right? And then they would send out a, a call blast, email blast if they're on the app, an app blast to those specific people. Problem is, is that's at the end of the day, right? That's not good enough. And we shouldn't be putting ourselves in a position that we're planning on by the skin of our teeth getting complete at the end of our day, if that makes sense. And so, yes, there were calls out. Yes, there are emails out. Yes, there are. The app, as long as people opt in on the app. But it's not good enough, right? It, it needed to not happen in the first place.
Come in. Go ahead, please.
No, go on. You said the end of the day or whatever like that. What is the, what is the time for the end of the day? Because I had a call at four forty-five before I came in here. And this was in the Colony area, Williamsburg area. And they said that half the streets hadn't been picked up in a couple of weeks. And I can get you the, I can get the address to the mayor or whatever.
Yeah, definitely.
Give everyone the name of the mayor, please.
But they're real angry, and they want to know, I mean, they can't dock the employees or whatever. Are they going to get some kind of credit or something on their bill?
So timeframe-wise, normally, if everything's running the way it should be running, four to four forty-five is, is usually when guys are done with the routing here in their day. If they are running behind when three people are trying to tackle four people's routes, you're looking at five, six, seven o'clock, right? And there's a, there is a hard stop because there's laws against certain number of hours in this particular day, right? And so driver starts at five o'clock, he cannot work past seven o'clock. I don't want him out there that late. But he can't. That's against the law. And so you, you have them sometimes where they're going by the very last minute that they can and know that they can get back to the shop in time. And so some of those calls have happened at six, seven, eight o'clock at night. As they are making sure they're caught up and everything, it does not surprise me if it's four o'clock and they hadn't been to a particular location yet, because I know I haven't gotten a text that everybody was in yet. I haven't checked in the last forty-five minutes, honestly. But that absolutely does not necessarily surprise me. I know the Colony was one that was brought up, but it was supposed to be early. So we need to figure out those addresses and to figure out the why.
Yeah, please, check back on.
Hundred percent.
That was supposed to go first thing this morning. So we knew about it.
Okay.
So you, you know, some of the issues that you're having, from what I'm hearing, that you all got a plan in place to go back and fix those, those, those-
Correct.
-missed trash collection will be taken care of as soon as possible, if not soon.
Yes, hundred percent.
That's why I want specific guy addresses, Mayor, because we were supposed to be in the Colony first thing this morning to get those, so.
And, and for you all, anytime you get a complaint about a trash issue, you know, you tell the constituents to call so they can document that they just tried to call themselves, then you also probably need to follow up with me, an email or a text. Let me know. If you get the address, that would be great. And what I do with it, then I forward it on to Tim and Todd. And what they will do is they will, and what I also will do is, if you send it, send me the email, I'm going to copy when I send it to them, and you will also be copied back your response, so you know exactly what was done. And that way, you could tell your constituents that, hey, it was reported. This is what I found out what they're going to do, if that makes sense. That way, we keep a, a good log. And one other thing is, the start time is at six?
I think that's part of the city ordinance, right?
Yes, because I have had some-
I had questions on that.
I've had some issues on that where there had been some times that start time for collection was around four forty-five, five o'clock. So in the morning-
That was a few months ago, right?
Yes. And, and so, but she said, she just got one earlier this week.
I had one, and that was my street, actually. They were there at five fifteen for the past two weeks.
Okay, that shouldn't be happening.
So if you would send me that, I'll also send it to them so they can document that. Because they can track their, the driver as he chases in.
Yeah, our guys' crew in time is five AM, right? And we do a morning meeting every single morning. And then they have to do a, what's called a pre-trip. They got to do a full inspection on the truck. Shouldn't be leaving our lot by like five thirty, and then it takes time to get over here. But if that's happening early, we can track it down, right? Because we know what time I've actually got a time punch, right? Because I know when somebody clocks in, we have GPS on every single one of our trucks. We can track down exactly who and why.
Well, following up with Sange's question, she had several in there. The one about giving any kind of rebate back or anything like that? Is that an option or on the table at all?
Generally, we don't, because what we will do is we just collect everything, right? If, if you miss service, your can is overfull, right? And normally, you're supposed to have an extra can. But if it's, if we missed it, we need to collect everything, right? And so we don't, but that's because we're still going to come back, and we're still going to collect everything.
Okay.
All right.
That would be enough.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Question, question. Go ahead.
So I have a constituent who is generating more recycling than to buy weekly. He needs to pick up on a weekly basis. Can he get another recycling bin?
I think we got to look into that. We generally haven't because there's limitations on how frequently we can. But I think it's, you know, one of the things that we actually have talked about is, is it, when you get a little over halfway through a contract, looking at all the different aspects of it and saying, is it making sense the way everybody intended on it working? And that may be something that we need to add to the list of talking through, do we do? Like, the contract states it's supposed to be just one for recycling. But again, I think that should be something that we can easily put on our list of, let's look at that and say, does it make sense if we need to make adjustments?
And if you, if you would send something like it to me, I would be able to send it to them to refresh them to put it on there.
Mayor, I have another comment.
What?
Um, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
The data you brought today sounds like it's from a six-month data set from July through the end of November.
Yep.
Do you track it on a monthly basis?
We track it on a daily basis.
It would be good to have it presented on a monthly basis, because then we can see what trends are. It's easier to see the trends.
Yeah.
And see what's actually improving and what's not improving. So, and, and instead of just, you know, verbalizing what that data is, just bring in some hard copies or a quick little PowerPoint, and so that the council can get a better understanding of where some of the issues are, what's working well.
Well, you're going to see a rise in calls any month that has a holiday. I'll tell you that right off the bat.
That's fine. Case, that's, that's fine.
And Tim and Todd, it's okay that if you get that program or that, that PowerPoint, you know, you can send it to, to, to me.
Yeah, she'll offer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And send it to- And send it to us, and we can get to council prior to a meeting. That way, if they have questions, they can let me know what those questions are, and I can give them to you, and hopefully you get those questions answered prior to the meeting. Thank you.
I'll volunteer, Todd, to put anything together you need.
I love it. Getting ready to take some time off, I have all kinds of time to do it.
Uh, Mayor.
All right, one other question here.
Yep.
Yeah, um, and I mean this respectfully, because I do think a lot of things have improved, and we've been trying to meet quarterly, and I know the mayor meets with you all a lot. But I think this question of rebate for contractual, um, system that we have is an important one, and as we look at the contract that we have, and renegotiate perhaps some of the things that aren't working well, I think that, um, you know, if you look nationally, the airline industry now is under a very short, um, you know, if you don't do this by this amount of time, then there are going to be refunds that are automatically issued. And I think, in a general sense, people feel as though they've paid for a service that the city has contracted for, and if that service is not providing in a timely manner, then economically, they're on the losing end. So, I just wanted to make that comment, that just makes sense to me. I don't know what contractually that would do, but that's kind of where I land. Thank you.
All right. Okay.
So on to some better news, I guess, some good news. Um, Mayor, you were talking about your streets of Georgetown in the parade, and how good everything looked. Uh, we recently just used Main Street in one of our training videos to go countrywide, so forty-two states we're in, and Georgetown Main Street will be in the training video with one of our supervisors. So we just thought there was a nice little blur, just throw in there. Um, we've talked past a couple times about the Sam Sarah cameras, the additional cameras we put in, all of our trucks in the cab and on the outside, basically three hundred and sixty degrees all the way around. The cameras are, are great, uh, number one for safety. Um, they probably saved us in the Lexington market. We've had them for most two years, uh, because we were a pilot location. Uh, about thirty accidents when people have claimed we've hit them, or taken out a mailbox, or for training purposes, when there's a close call, because the camera will pick up if somebody swerves in front of us or something like that. Um, it will also pick up when the driver's following too close, and like a Siri, it's not really Siri, but a Siri voice will pop up and say, increase your following distance. Um, that's an awesome thing. Also, if the driver doesn't have a seatbelt on, alerts him, put a seatbelt on. If he picks up his phone, put the phone down.
Hmm.
Um, he gets one freebie, the second one automatically alerts the supervisor. So, you know, the safety, we always talk about safety being number one, and that's the investment that we're making in the safety. Um, even though it does require a little bit of work, not a lot, but there are some people that maybe, you know, live by themselves or whatever, may put their trash out once or twice a month. And sometimes, they might get that can out there a little bit late, and they'll just, oh, we, I'll call in, say they missed, whatever. Those cameras, actually, one, two, three, Main Street, we pull it up, it shows if the container's out or not. Um, and it's a, more of an education piece, you know, we're there, we could be there by six AM, we could be there by four o'clock PM. Please put the container out in the back at four. And then also, for location purposes, there's been some times where the driver says he was there, GPS shows he was there, container's not in the spot where he went to, it's in another location. Now, a lot of times, that's more commercially, not so much residentially. But some commercial containers are used, you know, they use the, uh, residential carts, so they might be placed somewhere different. So, the cameras are really essential, they're doing a good thing for us. Um, anything else on the Sam Sarah?
Comment, uh, please. Um, so with those cameras, so, you know, the, some of the cans, while I drive around, I see this a lot, that there's stuff sticking up out of the trash can, and the top's off, and I'm like, I know we've been educated on this, so does the driver drive by? Or does the driver go in and try to get it?
No, driver tries to get it, unless it's something that is, like, every once in a while, you'll see something in the can that's just unsafe to dump, um, right? If you can't safely dump it, then they don't. But, but other than that, yeah, then they should be just getting it.
Or if it's going to leave a big mess.
Yeah.
You know?
So, if the standard is it has to be closed, then it should be closed.
Correct.
So from a beautification standpoint, you can drive through out our community and see this trash sticking everywhere. And honestly, I would say, don't pick it up, if it's like that, it should be closed, it should be closed. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I hear you. It should be. But he'll get a phone call, and then you know us.
I'll get some too.
Yeah, we'll get a phone call.
I'll get some as well.
And then, you know, the customer's always right, so then we got to send the driver back.
And just my last meeting, so they can call me all they want.
I miss you, Alonso.
All right, now we got that out of the way, let's move on.
Um, that's the only part I had with the Sam Sarah.
Yeah, I mean, the Sam Sarah thing, it does a lot, right? We, we have been able to use it for educating our drivers, because there have been times where it's like, hey, you're going right here, but the can's over there. We saw you drive right by it. And so we can help ourselves with those things. It has absolutely saved us, but more importantly, it makes our drivers safer, because it forces them to be more and more alert. This time of year, when you have people starting at five AM, and it's cold, and they're pumping their heat, and it doesn't get sunny until seven, eight o'clock, that's a, that's a precipitous time a day. And this system will actually even recognize if they have that thousand-yard stare, and it alerts them. And I've, I've physically watched it, I've watched somebody do this, and it alerts them and wakes them up. It, it's a fantastic system that, um, you know, there's a lot of different uses for it, but the most important thing is it keeps them safer in our own communities. So it, it's been a big deal for us. Um, it's also been helping us with kind of confirming some routing. Well, we've been sending people out with our drivers to confirm routes, turn by turns. The next evolution is slowly but surely coming in our tablet system that will actually auto-let somebody know if they want to, hey, your can has been serviced, hey, we're two hours away, you can kind of track it like the UPS app kind of thing, um, which is pretty neat. And it will, uh, take a little bit of time. Our company's been very adamant about not releasing it until we know it works correctly, because we don't want to force wrong information out to the public, because it'll only cause confusion. Uh, so we've been really slow to make sure it's working correctly, and it's just about there. So, once that happens, you do have somebody who has their can out a little bit late, you'll actually notify them, hey, just let you know we're here, we'll come back, right? Let us know when, kind of thing. It also helps with understanding where your route is. A lot of times, we get, hey, this one side was done, but this second side wasn't. We don't service both sides at the same time, it's not always the case. But sometimes it is the fact that we will, we will avoid left-hand turns, and we will avoid going backwards any way we can. So, we could absolutely service this side of the street, and purposely not be back to the other side for about an hour. And until people understand that, they know the calls. But we won't send our drivers across the street, just because we don't want them crossing any kind of traffic, even in residential zones, it's not safe. So, can throw those things off, but we always want to know about them, because on the off chance it's not the case, we want to make sure we fix it. We don't want to make the assumption that, oh, it's fine, right? We want to make sure we know it, and if that's the case, we know what it is. But if it's not the case, we want you to fix it.
Yeah, the Sam Sarah also, he was talking about turn by turns and going right in. They'll also help us with the alleyways. Is it safer to drive in, pull in, and back back out? Or is it that alley going to be better to back in and pull straight out? Um, also with the alleys, we're also bringing on a, uh, route auditor that will be sharing with the local market as well. And the route auditor would be more, I mean, technology's great, but sometimes it's really helpful to get human eyes on it as well. And, and the route auditor will help us with some efficiencies, um, that the supervisor just can't, he can't be on the route every day, right? So, route auditor, ride with the driver for about a week, and, you know, watch off his routes, or hers, and find any kind of efficiencies we can pick up on as well.
I have a comment. So, Opera Alley, that was the one we just shut, wasn't it? Okay, so I have a question. Opera Alley, so you cannot drive through from East Washington to Bourbon Street now?
That, that was disclosed last week or?
Yes. Which one is it then?
It was in the name.
No, 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 the, or the week before, you know the one I'm talking about, because didn't you sponsor? What was the name of it then? I mean, it's right there by my office, I guess I ought to know what that address is.
Yeah.
Okay, I will email the right, uh, address.
Perfect.
I don't know why I wouldn't know it, because I'm right there. But my question is, because there's not a thorough way there, and my, my parking lot is behind my office, and so we always are bringing the can out here. I don't foresee a Republic truck coming up through there to get the house next to me and me on that alley. So my question would be, do we bring it around front where they can grab it?
I don't want to tell you anything wrong, we just need to get eyes on it to tell them.
Okay. And you might want to have the same information or conversation with the, the neighbor behind me. He could probably bring theirs up front on, um, North Memorial.
Yeah, those scenarios where you have to close down street, an alley, a road, whatever it may be, those, where we like to do is get out there, figure out who's affected, and then just figure out what's the best solution together. Because it may not be the same for every single person. We could say, hey, put it down at the end of the alley, and three of the four people could say, great, and somebody doesn't have the capacity to walk it that far, and we need to figure it out, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll check tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, anytime we know about those, we just want to get eyes on them together, and then just figure out what's the best solution for those that are affected.
Well, we really just kind of thought about it right now, when y'all were talking about it, it's like, hmm, I see you all coming up there now. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, Tim and Todd, thank you so much, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you have made us aware of the issues. But going forward, it would be really, again, if, you know, even if you give me something that I can get out to the public.
Sure.
That we can put on our webpage or so on, to let people know when there's an issue like this, you know, still we're having all these calls, they said, okay, this is the reason why. Again, so that way, uh, the public, uh, knows what we're doing, and there's a problem, and that you're all trying to fix it. Thank you, thank you very much.
Sondra, if you can get that address to him, okay. Mayor, if you can get that to me.
Oh, great.
That was fast.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, you all.
I'm better than Amazon, I tell you. All right, let's move on to item number, next is the presentation for City Hall.
Shewee.
And then they're going to come up, if you all are going to come up here. All right, and of course, this is another of those updates. We've seen you all, uh, a few times, and.
Few times.
I've, uh, went by there, and looking pretty good. I've been a couple times, so, uh, I'm glad that you took some time out to give us an update. Uh, so I think we're planning on coming, doing another walkthrough this week, I think.
This week, as soon as.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, hello, friends. Um, I'm going to apologize a little bit for my voice, I'm going to try to make it through this without coughing, so apologies in advance if I do. Um, we are glad to be in front of you all for our final update of the year. Um, I think there's really been a lot of, especially more exterior visible progress over the last few weeks. So, um, as you guys are able to walk around and or through the building, I think you'll see even more. So, um, we could go to the next slide. When we last met, we went through all of the hidden items that we found, of which the list grew and grew, um, but eventually stopped, which is good. And we had, um, change orders two and three that were approved. So that is sort of where we left you for our last meeting. Next slide. Um, so, we haven't found any more hidden items, which is great, so we're going to gray those items out. What we have coming up, um, we do have some more items, um, where pricing is in progress. So, change order four is being presented later this evening, um, which is a change to the, the drinking fountain to add bottle fillers, which is, um, going to be funded by GMWSS. Change order five, um, pricing is in progress for that right now. Those are revisions to AV security and access controls that really resulted as a, um, sort of operational change from when we did the design. So we're trying to get pricing back on that as well. Um, change order number six, revisions to the fire department connection, um, which we thought we had insufficient flow at the current hydrant. We met earlier today, actually, and found that, um, we can use that hydrant with some modifications, so we do still have some modifications that are required, but they are less extensive than we thought they were going to be, uh, which is great, always like that news. So hopefully, we will be able to get that pricing back as well, um, once we can nail down the, the final, um, connection location. And then change order number seven, which is in progress on our end, to get to the construction team for pricing. Um, there were some revisions made during construction, some changes to ceilings, um, rerouting ductwork to make things work a little bit better, um, removing some, um, electrical floor boxes that we didn't need, which is a big saving. So, all in all, there were some things that, um, were adds and some things that were deletions. So, um, we'll see where we end up with that one. But, uh, right now, that is looking fairly positive, um, with, with some of those revisions we've made. And feel free to stop me and ask questions anytime. Next slide. So getting into general update of what we have going on across the street. On the exterior, on the backside, we have the, the dormer connection from the third floor to the new stair tower that has been framed. So you see that starting to, to take form, and you'll see that continuing as the stair tower is built. Um, the metal roof, the new metal roof has been installed, and window installation has started. So when this photo was taken on the right, that was about a week and a half ago, and there are more windows along the first floor, all the windows in what will be council chambers, right, have been installed. Um, and I walked in there today, and it was very nice and bright, and very, very nice to see. So that will continue to, um, progress over the next few weeks. Next slide. Moving to the interior, um, on the ground floor, the underslide utility work has completed. There's the area sort of in the back corner where the mechanical room is going to be, has been prepped for the concrete slab to be poured. Um, we continue to monitor the water infiltration at the exterior walls, and there'll be a little bit more on that coming up, a little bit more detail, so stay tuned. Um, and then the corridor wall furring, um, and the drywall demo is in progress there, just in that corridor on the ground floor. Next slide. On the first floor, um, all the steel has been installed, and that's, that's true on all floors now. Um, the wall framing is in progress for council chambers and the restrooms and, and everything else on that floor, and the remainder of the existing wood floor has been uncovered. Um, as we've continued to uncover it, you know, we have found a few areas that will need to be replaced, and we have some salvaged floors to be able to do that, but in general, it's in really good shape. So that is great to see. Next slide. On the second floor, um, all the wall framing is complete, drywall installation is in progress, soffit framing in the corridor is in progress, um, and overhead MEP installation is also in progress. So there's a lot that's being done on the second floor right now. Um, it looks completely different from what it used to, so that is exciting to see. Next slide. We also have, um, what we call the reverse soffit, that kind of runs around the perimeter. Um, it lets our ceilings be a little bit, um, taller, but also have the, the full height windows. So, that installation is also nearly complete, I think, for the soffit framing, and then the drywall is in progress. Next slide. Um, the third floor, I think this is really exciting to see. The raised floor has been completely installed. Um, the wall framing is nearly complete, although by now, actually, might be complete. Um, the drywall on the underside of the roof has been installed. So, um, if you remember, a portion of the, the, the roof where it slopes gets drywall, and then up at the top, the framing remains exposed. Um, so that is all, has all been installed, and the skylights have been framed in. Next slide. Um, the ceiling framing is in progress for the partial height walls. Um, so you'll have your offices, and then you'll still be able to see above them to the brick walls that are exposed, and then the framing that's above. Again, the rear dormer connection framing is complete, um, that's that sort of lower-left photo. And then the elevator shaft has been installed. So, once we get our elevator in, um, we won't have to climb up a ladder to get to the third floor anymore. Next slide. Um, so, a little update on some character, which I think is really fun. The vault door and frame has been relocated to the second floor. So when you get off the elevator on the second floor and you come right out, that vault door and frame is there sort of to tell a part of the history of the building. Also, the jail cell window in the ground floor has been completely uncovered. And as you can see there, the bars are still there for most of the bars, the partial bars that are there. The other pieces are actually laying there in the wall cavity and can be, I think there's only one that's not there, and so those can be welded back in place. So it's fun when you find things that where you don't have to completely replace it, and all the original stuff is still there. Next slide. Here's a little update on the floor. We have just a little tiny mock-up. So the wood floors, we've done a test area, that's the photo on the left, where we're going to be installing some mechanical equipment. So we want to stain the floors underneath that before we install the equipment. So that is the stain, and that's what the original hardwood floors will look like when everything is complete. It's really exciting. I mean, I'm excited, but. Next slide. Okay, so back to our water infiltration. We have been continuing to monitor it, particularly after we've had some bad rains. Once we capped the downspouts, so right now the down, well, before, the downspouts went underground and connected under the sidewalk and came out to the street. Once we capped those and kept water from going underground, we saw the wall continue to dry out, and it was not getting as wet every time it rained. We still have some more investigation to do. It requires tearing up that front sidewalk, so we're trying to coordinate coordinate that with when that site work is going to go on. But the good news is, is we are not seeing a lot of the water coming in, particularly on that front side, which is right under the entry, right below the sidewalk. And once we're able to take that sidewalk up, if we find anything, we'll be able to address it then to make sure that we don't continue to have water infiltration in the future. Next slide. Just to give a quick update, we had a lot of of walls, particularly in the ground floor, that were furred out from the stone, the original stone, or were up on raised platforms. All of that has actually been removed. It was much easier to remove that based on how it was installed in the first place than to try to anchor it back and create some weird stuff, we'll say. So we've taken everything out. In the training room, those walls will get furred back, so it'll be a nice, clean surface in that training room. In the back of house spaces, like the electrical room, the mechanical room, the stone walls will remain exposed, and we'll clean them up. We'll make sure that they are properly pointed, that there are no gaps or anything like that, and those will remain exposed. Next slide. So upcoming tasks for us. Again, we have the change orders to finalize, the pricing to finalize, and get in front of you for review. Again, that change order seven has the potential for credit due to the larger items that we took out of the scope, like those electrical floor boxes, for construction. And I'm treading a little bit on some toes here, so I might let these guys weigh in. But we've got continued window installation, metal stair on the interior to install, the elevator to install, continue with MEP, continue wall framing, drywall, and then begin installing finishes. Anything you guys want to add on work coming up?
I think when I get to this slide here, I'll kind of expand upon it a little bit.
Okay, so then next slide is your scheduled slide.
So what I tried to do with this slide, you know, we're dealing with a 500 line item schedule in the field that you, it'd take a lot of time to explain and walk through with you. So what I did is I took each floor, and I just listed the four or five milestone items, which in Elizabeth's pictures, you could pretty well see some of these tasks. And what I wanted to do is show you if we were ahead or behind, because Stacy has asked several times, we want to update on schedule. And every month, when Shay comes to a meeting, we're behind schedule. So I want to kind of bring that to light and explain a little bit today why that is. So if you go down through these items, and I'm not going to touch on every one of them, but you've got your MEP rough-in, which is your duct work, your electrical, your plumbing, and fire protection work, all above ceiling. Third floor, we were supposed to be done eight twenty-seven. Well, we're probably sixty percent done there. Forty, forty, oh, third floor, forty percent. So you look at second floor, we're done, with the exception of the fire protection piping. And that was one of the items that Elizabeth brought up. We can't put the fire protection in. So we're ready to paint those walls, put the ceiling grid in, and really start putting flooring and everything in. But until we get this finalized, which she thinks today, the cities, you know, they've met with them and agreed. But small things like that stop several other trades from continuing to work. So we have turned a corner, and there's not a date on here that's ahead of schedule. I'll just make it easy for you to look at. But at the end of the day, the month and a half that we are behind, due to all of these unforeseen conditions, I mean, we've had to start our sequencing from the beginning, was basement through the third floor. And then you all remember, when we presented that change order, we had to shift that around, start third floor down. Well, two weeks into that, we have to go to the second floor and start there and work there only because of other issues that came about. So we've had a lot of challenges that we've had to work through, but we've we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we're finally moving on. And I think realistically, by February, you'll see those things start coming around and getting back on track. Any specifics? Cade's here. He's here every day. He can answer anything you want to see. If you want to come to the site, I know you do that monthly, but.
What is your anticipated final date?
So right now, we're tied to four-four contractually, April. But this last change order, several of those combined, we have requested an additional forty-five day extension. But realistically, let's get that in front of us, see kind of by the next month how we progress, see what it needs to be. But but the contractors are due the days. Nobody's asking for more money. They're just, they don't want to get to the end of the job, and, you know, because they were held up for conditions that are 200 years old nobody knew about. So we want to present them to you all, let you know what they are. And we've kept Stacy and Devin in the loop. But but right now, Alonso, we're honestly probably summer. We're looking at May.
And the delayed schedule doesn't affect our GMP?
Well, we'll have to do an amendment for the GMP for these changes that we've already done, and that'll that pushes it to the April date. So yes, if we extend past that with these next change orders, we'll have to amend it again. But I realistically think, his schedule that he's walking around with on the job site is saying six.
Six nineteen as of now. And I think what what we're not seeing here is, like Wes touched on, items are ninety percent complete, and we're just waiting on, you know, a few few things here and there to fully complete them. And I think, you know, once we put completion date, Tim will bring that back even even further.
A lot of this schedule is tied to some of this site work that we've not even started. We don't want to tie up the roads, you know, until we have to, just like the the issue with the water. We could have resolved that months ago. But I don't want to tear that out until we're ready to fix, you know, keep moving. So honestly, you could probably punch three or four dates in, and the schedule will drop even further. But in reality, we're over a month, a month and a half right now.
But is there a possibility that, you know, if you turn the corner, it possibly, it could be prior to April?
It won't be prior to April, but I, I mean, if everything went perfectly, we could possibly finish in April like, you know, we were on track to do. But in reality, I think it's summer. Just because, I mean, we're still working through, you know, she met today, feels good about it, but if it's another week down the road, that second floor's still sitting there with nothing happening. Every little thing that happens that we don't have answers for, just and Sarah's worked hard on this audiovisual stuff, that's keeping us from hanging drywall on some of these floors. Second floor, we had had it roughed in because there wasn't as many changes. We can't finish the first floor, third floor, or the basement. We can't even hang the drywall because we don't have that change order reviewed and finalized. So once we get that, Mayor, I think, yes, April, May is doable, but it's going to take a lot of, a lot of things.
I don't want to jump, jump ahead, but under thirteen, thirteen D, there is a contract amendment that states in it, in the in the order states that the, if the project extends beyond April four, two thousand twenty-five, we've been authorized to bill them seventy-two hundred fifty a month past that date, so.
Do you want to start? If you want to go to the next slide as well.
Yeah, this was, that is the architectural, because they are doing the additional construction admin. So it's the architectural contract.
Okay, because I read it earlier, and I was like, okay.
Yeah.
What's what?
Karen talk.
Presented ours, that's why I was saying, I'm going to wait till we get the rest of the changes.
Elizabeth's going to talk about that right now, but just for clarification, that is the architectural contract. The GMP is with Codell, so.
So I'll just quickly go through the the contract update, just to try to give a little bit of background to that. So originally, our substantial completion date in the owner-architect agreement that we had with you guys was September sixteenth. And the first change order extended that substantial completion date to March eighteenth twenty-five with the final completion date of four-four, two thousand twenty-five. That is thirty-six months after the start of our contract with you all for for the design through construction of the project. Which technically, if you look at all the dates and how they're outlined in our contract, that's an additional six months worth of time. So our agreement outlined an eleven-month construction schedule. It allows for additional services to be requested after twenty months. So if everything has not been completed after twenty months, we're allowed to ask for additional services to cover that time spent that's outside of that agreed contract time and date, just for the architectural services. There is also potential for, as I mentioned, redesigning this water line for the fire department connection, which has been included in this number. That fee may actually reduce based, again, on the meeting today. So the paperwork we obviously sent last week in preparation for this meeting, and then we had a meeting today where we made some changes, so that fee actually may reduce on their end for that added design work. So we will try to get through that this week and provide an update as soon as we can. So what we have proposed is a lump sum fee for that extended CA, for that extra six months' worth of construction administration services that we provide as part of the the services, which gets us to that April date. So we propose a lump sum fee to get to that April date. And then we're hoping it's done in April. But if it's not, you know, we, do we come back again? How do we judge that? And so what we had proposed was just a set monthly fee of seventy-two fifty. Lots of numbers floating around. I need my cheat sheet up there. Seventy-two fifty for extended construction administration services, should it extend past that April date. And then that way, you know, we don't have to come back however many times to ask for that additional fee. It's sort of built in there based on when that would complete. So that's sort of very brief background to that contract amendment that's being proposed later this evening.
Any other questions?
We need to copy that PowerPoint.
Copy what?
PowerPoint.
I, yeah, but I don't have that.
It does not have this slide, so this, we added, again, because of the meeting that we had today and the potential for that fee to reduce, I did add this one in at the last minute. So you did not get that, but I can send it to Stacy if you guys would like a copy of that.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, as always, and we're hoping that April fourth will get done.
Thank you, all.
Good.
All right, next we have council committee report, and we have police.
Todd was on the interview here, and he would like to submit.
Okay, so we will pass that on to next meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman Hamburgh. Next, we have GMW, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, number nine, the George South Scott County Parks and Rec Municipal Order, Marshall Park Lighting. And Stacy, I'll let you and Drew come up, and you can tee it up and go with it.
Sorry, you're going to see a lot of me tonight. I'm going to kick this off just to talk about it from a budget and procurement standpoint. And then obviously, if you have any questions about the details of the project itself, I will defer to Drew. Obviously, in the budget, the city council set aside five hundred seventy thousand dollars for projects at Marshall Park. We know the two biggest projects that have been talked about have been lighting and restrooms on the football field side of the park. This municipal order will address the first issue that Drew was kind of ready to pull the trigger on, which is the lighting. Recently, I think it was at the last meeting, council approved the use of cooperative purchasing. And Drew had already actually been working through this vendor. And as it turns out, they do have a source well contract, which is one of the cooperative purchasing methods that council approved. So we were able to talk to that vendor, get a revised quote through that cooperative purchasing agreement to address the lighting issue at Marshall Park Softball Field One. And of course, we will be looking at bidding out the other project for the restrooms in January, when it's a little more favorable to get responses from bids. Over the holidays is a hard time to get a decent amount of responses, so. That is it, and if you have any questions on the financial side or procurement, I'll answer those. If you have any questions about the project, I'll let Drew answer those.
Yes, Mr. Showwater.
Specifically on the lighting. Are we ready? If everything goes well here in just a few minutes? Or will that be in place before the next softball season in the spring?
I hope so. We don't have an exact delivery date until we, you know, agree for, allow it to come on. But I would assume so. I don't want to make any promises that I that I can't keep. But we'll we'll get it processed as soon as we get approval.
Can I word that differently then? Would the intent to be to get that done?
Yes, absolutely.
As quick as we can?
Intense, as soon as possible.
And then I'm assuming the same thing with the restrooms down the road?
Oh, absolutely. We are going to put out the bid, like I said, in in January. Because during this time of year, as Stacy alluded to, you don't get favorable bids this time of year. So you want to try to get it out to where you get the best for us, so. And you get more people involved, so that's why we're going to put it in January. And once we get those bids, we are going to come back to the table and go from there.
So one last comment then, so it sounds like two thousand twenty-five is going to be big for Marshall Field.
Absolutely.
I think there are a lot of people, a lot of people are going to be very happy with that.
We've been ready for a long time.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
All right, so I think we need a motion. Okay, motion made by Mr. Allen. He's jumped the gun, that's okay. And second by Ms. Tackett, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion made and properly seconded. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Next, we have GMWSS and Chase. We're going to do the individually. We'll go with A, Southern Sales Company for an amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Mayor, if you would allow, I'd like to pull that one from the agenda tonight. I need to get some more information on that purchase order and bring that back to council for consideration at a later date, if you would allow. And I checked that with the city attorney prior to the meeting.
Go ahead, so.
Thank you.
Item B, Judy Construction for thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Two purchase orders for Judy Construction tonight. This first one, this is a change order for additional services on our project. Through the construction process, we've got the ground opened up right now. We realized we'd like to add an additional drain line while they're doing all their yard piping. And this is from our primary treatment structure, the largest structure on the site that that you saw in the video, the sequential batch reactor. And that's a line that'll go from there to the headworks of the plant. In the case that we need to drain any of those cells for operation and maintenance, which we will, we can use this line. What we planned on doing was simply dropping a pump and then running temporary line. That was kind of what we planned in the design, how we would do operation and maintenance on on those cells. Now that we're seeing the ground open, we're really thinking that just a permanent line from that structure to the headworks, that's going to be a lot more efficient. That will prevent us from having to run that line and rent a pump to do that. So we feel like this is an appropriate change order, and that we would fund this out of our depreciation savings.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett.
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for Judy Construction for thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Item C, Hexon Technologies for an amount of ninety-eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
This is for purchase of twenty-four thousand gallons of hexa flock, and this is a budgeted purchase every six months at our wastewater plant, too. This is our phosphorus removal chemical. This is our phosphorus removal chemical, um, that we use to meet our, our discharge permit limits. This is, uh, as I said, a budgeted item, and this is a bid price that we're, we're purchasing this through.
Motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Conway, second by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of the motion, Hexon Technologies for nine, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that motion passed. Item D, Judy Construction for six-hundred-ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
This is our most recent pay-up. Um, this is for work completed in the month of November by Judy Construction on Plant One upgrade and expansion, um, as we, uh, continue to work and move towards that, uh, big milestone that we hope is as soon as possible, beneficial use of the new facilities. And so, we recommend, um, that this work has all been verified, and we recommend approval of this, uh, this pay-up.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett.
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hambrik. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of the motion for Judy Construction for six-hundred-ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that this motion passed.
Um, just two quick informational items, um, nothing for council action, but one being that, um, I know that we've had some questions on, um, what the council has requested on developer impact fees, and, uh, I've been working with the consultant as well as Judy Construction to pull together some revised numbers, um, to, to go with the presentation that you've already seen from, uh, Tishler Vice, and we're working with Judy Construction. They're helping me to pull some of the numbers out that are, um, uh, not appropriate. We've gotta distinguish what is appropriate for inclusion into a, a fee proposal and what is not. They've been helping me with that, and we're, we're ready to wrap that up, and we think that this will, um, significantly reduce the wastewater treatment component of that fee, should the council, uh, uh, want to take that up and, and consider that. So, more to come on that, but I did wanna give you that quick update. The other thing, council member Tackett, council member, um, Butcher Conway, Mr. Allen, Mr. Shawalter, it has been a pleasure the last two years. Um, we thank you for your support. What we do is, is not easy here. It takes critical thinking and compassion. Thank you all for your support, and thank you for, for working with us.
We appreciate you very much.
All right. Next item, uh, is city attorney, Ms. Emily Rushman will come up, and the first is, uh, A, Second Reading of the Amendment to Zoning Ordinance, Um, Medicinal Cannabis.
Um, yes, so at the last meeting, um, we had the first reading, there were a couple of questions, um, one being if Chief Allgood had a chance to look at the regulations, he did, there were no questions or red flags. Um, and then council member Hambrik had asked, um, maybe what some other jurisdictions, um, have learned from this process, and Holden is here, um, if there's anything to report.
Come on up. When, when Holden Fleming, um, planning zoning.
Council members, Mayor. Uh, I was able to reach out to, uh, several jurisdictions and states outside of Kentucky, uh, who had already adopted either medicinal cannabis or, uh, recreational cannabis ordinances. The resounding feedback that I got is that there was, uh, typically a considerable amount of conversation on the front end, and then once the ordinances were adopted, much less conversation moving forward. And for the most part, uh, with the jurisdictions I spoke to, they felt that they were comfortable with the ordinances that they had in place, that they reflected their community. And so as we move forward with this second reading, I think that's the most important thing, is for this council to feel comfortable that the ordinance as presented reflects Georgetown's needs. Um, and so with that, if there are any questions specific to planning and zoning, I am here to help. Thank you.
So, if there's no questions, we can go with the second reading?
All right.
Article two, Georgetown Scott County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Medical Medicinal Cannabis Business Operations, Summary One, amends Article Two, Section two point one of the Georgetown Scott County Zoning Ordinance to create a definition related to medicinal cannabis business operations. Two, amends Article Two, Section two point five to create a new section establishing specific use regulations for medicinal cannabis business operations. Three, provides for repeal, existing laws, severability provisions, and effective data passage publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, six-twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www.dorchesterkyc.org. I would introduce you here for the first time November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, holden for the second time December ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and/or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Hambrik?
Yes.
Ms. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lincoln?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett? Yes.
All right, let the record reflect, the vote was seven zero in favor of the motion, and passed. Second, uh, Second Reading of the Annexation Ordinance, six fifty-six Del Plain Road, sponsored Greg Hampton and Mark Shawalter.
Um, so also at the last meeting, we had a first reading on this. This is an annexation ordinance for a property just north of the Toyota, um, plant, um, to bring that into the city limits. Um, we do have council here, I think he's here?
Yes.
Um, if there were any more questions about the development or, or the request of how we got here, Holden is also here. If there's questions about annexation, or again, that, um, development plan process, um, if there are no questions, we'll proceed with the second reading.
Great.
An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown, certain rural property containing approximately ten point four four plus minus acres located at or around six fifty-six Del Plain Road in Scott County, summery one. Annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owner in accordance with care as eighty-one A, four twelve, personal ten point four four plus minus acres property located at or around six fifty-six Del Plain Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Two, provides for repeal, existing laws, severability provisions, and effective data passage publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in Georgetown City clerk's office, six-twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www.dorchesterkyc.org. I would introduce you here for the first time November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, holden for the second time December ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Shawalter, do you have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and/or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins Brent?
Yes.
Ms. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Hambrik?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect, the vote of seven zero, motion passed. Uh, Item C, First Reading of the Zone Change Georgetown Comments, sponsored Sonia Wilkins Brent and Greg Hampton.
Um, okay, so this item, um, this is a zone change request. Um, we do have the applicant and their counsel here tonight, and again, planning staff here if there are questions. Um, our focus here is the zone change. Um, we're not here about the development plan or anything outside the scope of that, um, but if you do have some questions about the project, you can ask those. This one is a little bit different from what you've seen recently, so there's no annexation, um, condition here, it's simply just a zone change. Um, the only reason I bring the difference up is it's a question of timing. So, you know, this is our last meeting of the year, but you'll notice this is a first reading of this ordinance. Zone change requests like this, they do have a timeline, a time limit that goes with them, and based on when the Planning Commission, um, I guess made the recommendation for approval on this, um, that started the clock. Um, January eighth, I believe, is the date that if you all, um, were essentially gonna take action that went against the Planning Commission's recommendation, we would have to have something in place by then. But with this first reading tonight, we can either call, uh, a special meeting to have a second reading, to just tie a bow on this, or after January eighth, this will essentially go into effect by operation of law. So, just wanted to call out that nuance. It's a little bit different from what you've seen recently, um, but it's your decision of, do you wanna have the second reading, or do you wanna let it go?
I prefer to do it ourself.
Can, I might have missed, completely misunderstood what you just said. Um, and I apologize if I did. First reading tonight, this is our last scheduled council meeting of the new year. We've got a deadline, there's a deadline the first week of January. If there's not, if, if there's not a second reading before that deadline, it passes by default?
The ordinance goes into effect, 'cause it is in line with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Is that normal?
Again, I'm, I'm just one person here, um, during my last meeting. This, there's gonna be four new council members, and for them, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with calling a special call council meeting to get this done.
I am too. I think we should put a bow on it. Yeah. I am as well.
So the next council right out of the gate doesn't have to address a pretty, a pretty large project.
I agree.
They also wouldn't have to call a special meeting, 'cause their first meeting would be after the deadline, so.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any questions about the zone change? Or anything like that? No? Okay.
First reading?
An ordinance changing the standard classification of certain rural property containing approximately nine nine point six four plus or minus acres located at or around Georgetown Scott County, Kentucky, from I-one and I-one ESLI to B-five C-one and or three, summary one, three zones approximately nine nine point six four plus or minus acres located at or around Georgetown County, Kentucky, from I-one and I-one ESLI to B-five C-one and or three. Two, the bachelor building, existing law, severability provisions, and effective data passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, six-twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www.dorchesterkyc.org. Public introduction, we're at the first time December ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
So at this time, so I guess we will, uh, let you all know when a special call meeting will be done with that, or can we just do it tonight? Some dates, or this is?
If you want, you can float around dates if you want, but also we can coordinate later.
Uh, so, would you, would this council prefer that we give you some dates to look at, uh, and let you all know at that time, and we can get a quorum to be there for that?
I think it'd be good.
Okay, so there, we will float some, we will send you all some dates, and, and coordinate a actual, uh, date and time for the, uh, special call meeting for this.
It won't cost, it won't call, it won't be ten minutes.
Yep. All right. Okay.
All right. Moving on.
Next we have the Item D Municipal Order Purchase and Sale of, uh, sale agreement, eighteen-twenty-nine Oxford Drive.
You wanna tee this one up a little bit?
Well, this is, as you all know, the, uh, purchase here of the, uh, of Lexus, Lexus Way, where we're gonna actually leave with the connected road of that. And as you also know, uh, Congressman Barr has given us some money, I think one point six million dollars, uh, close to being accurate, one point six million dollars for the design phase. And this project is something that we have been working on, uh, council has been working on for years, and hopefully we're able to move forward with this, especially with the design phase, and, and we can also go back to him with some other possible, uh, help with even construction phase later down the road. So, but I wanted to tee it up to give you all a, kind of a refresh of what this is all about, and we'll go from there. So I.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
You say any mo, motion?
All right. Motion's made by Ms. Tackett.
Second, Mayor.
Second made by Mr.
Can you tell?
Hampton, excuse me. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those, uh, in favor of the municipal order purchasing and sale, eighteen-twenty-nine Oxford Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item E is the second phase of this, and the municipal order for purchase and sale of Oxford Drive, as you know, part of this project is also trying to widen, uh, Old Oxford. Uh, so, this is also a part of that particular project. And, I need a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and/or comments?
Do I have a question or a comment? There is additional property between that point and Old Oxford. Is that still more land that has to be purchased? I know the city owns some of that land in there.
I don't know if there is. I don't think there's any more of that land that we have to purchase.
We'll confirm for you.
Hmm?
Yeah.
We can look at that this second. All right.
Uh, and for the record, uh, it's not a typo, this property actually doesn't have an ad, like a street address.
Okay.
So, just wanted to put that on the record.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, purchase and sale agreement for Oxford Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item F Municipal Order, amend to, uh, LRPBP Phase Three Design Service Contract. And I believe this is talking about Langone's Business Park. I do know we have Mr. Connors here, and if there's questions on that, then I'll let you go from there.
Um, so as you know, um, we are working on the design of, uh, Phase Three of Langone's Business Park. Um, so Thoroughbred Engineering was awarded the contract for, for the work for that project. Um, they were notified by Kentucky American Water that they had changed their policy. Um, so the engineer came to, um, came to us via, via Jack. Um, essentially, the change in the policy requires the developer to design the water infrastructure for the projects. Um, that's not a service that they provide anymore, so the request from Thoroughbred is to amend that contract essentially to allow them to do that design work, um, and they'll work with Kentucky American Water to get the approvals, um, that sort of thing, but this is, that's why this came up. It was an unexpected change in policy.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion, Mayor. Motion made by.
By the mayor.
Motion.
Hold on, we got comments, hold on.
Oh, which man? Jack Connors?
I just wanna say that the thirty thousand dollar contract is not an addition to this project. What will happen is that Kentucky American Water, when they have given us the final estimates to construct the water lines, that thirty thousand dollars will be deducted, so this is not an add, okay?
Thank you.
All right, this might be some good news. Okay, thank you. Let's try this again. Okay, motion made by Ms. Tackett, uh, by the mayor, and second by?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hambrik. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of Item F Municipal Order, uh, amendment to the Langone Business Park Phase Three Design Service Contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item twelve Dispatch Municipal Order, uh, Tyler Tech Service Agreement for Cloud Hosting and Software Maintenance. And I perceive we got Lieutenant Moore up here with us, and, and Stacy and?
Yes, uh, Lieutenant Moore is obviously here to answer any questions about the project, but we've been using Tyler Tech, uh, for the computer-aided dispatch software for many years. Council has approved those maintenance agreements. We usually do them in three-year, five-year increments. Um, this is a three-year agreement, first and foremost, so that you know that. And the second, uh, difference is, this includes our typical software licensing and support, but it also includes cloud hosting. So rather than hosting the software on our own internal server, uh, this is moving to the cloud hosting environment. Uh, that is something that Tyler Technologies is pushing for. The server that this currently resides on is end-of-life, and so we had a choice to make, and, uh, Tyler is recommending all of their clients go to the cloud-hosted environment by two thousand and thirty. And then, uh, this was a budgeted project in the nine-one-one budget, so of course the cost will be shared according to the, uh, local agreement. If you have any questions about the project itself, um, I'll defer those to Lieutenant Moore.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Allen. Second made by Ms. Conway. Are there further questions and or comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Thank you. Now, now, Stacy here again, the financial department?
Stay here a while.
Okay. Municipal, Item A Municipal Order, Investment Transactions with Stockyard Bank and Trust. I believe there's some of the investment of the $5 million.
Yes, this is the $5 million that council invested with Stockyards. Can't remember now if it was, I think, June of '23 when we made that initial investment. And as those maturities, investments mature, we bring that back to you with recommendations on how to proceed. Finance Committee requested that we do these on a shorter term to take advantage of the current interest rates rather than doing 18 to 24 month renewals, which would be at a lower interest rate. So you have the proposal, there was a cash balance from some securities that matured in October. And then we have some that are about to mature this month. So this takes care of all of those with a staggered maturity date between February and December of '25. For a total of $1,350,000 that we are reinvesting.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton? Second made by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion to investment transaction with Stockyard Bank and Trust, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Item B MOU with Georgetown Scott County Parks and Rec for ARPA funding. And I believe she sent something out to you on this. That you should have gotten it so, and she eloquently explained this to you all that even I figured that out. So that's, that's always not easy, but I did. And so if you have a question, we'll talk about that later, but-
Yes, and I'll go ahead and just recap, as I said in that email, I'll, I'll recap it, but I wanted to give you some time to digest. As we talked about, we reviewed the ARPA fund and we had about 300, that exact amount, we had 349,000 that some projects that we had allocated for ARPA funding had come in under budget. And as you know, the federal regulations say that we have to contractually obligate that money by December 31st of this year. And of course, we're not at a point where we're able to bid anything out at this point that we had budgeted. And in consultation with the mayor, Karen, our grants administrator, Drew with Parks and just internal staff, with the mayor's recommendation that we use that remaining 340,000 for Parks projects. And what this is doing is the 570,000 that we've allocated for Marshall Parks, essentially that'll be split. And 286,000 will be coming out of this remaining ARPA funds, since it has to be contractually obligated, obligated by December 31st. And then the general fund will still have 283,000 and change for Marshall Parks. Same total, 570,000, we'll just be using ARPA for part of it and general fund for part of it. That's the easiest way to get these funds obligated within that federal guideline. The, as we already talked about, the lighting project that you approved earlier in the evening will be part of the ARPA funding. There'll be about 87,500 left for Marshall Parks. And then one of the requests from Parks was a walking trail at Ed Davis. And they have a quote for that for 62,900. That's an asphalt project, so that is something that would be completed in the spring once the plants open back up. So those are the three projects that council had not, you know, previously committed ARPA funding for. And then at Karen's recommendation, to make sure everything's officially contractually obligated, we formed this in a memorandum of agreement with Parks. Just so that we have everything compliant with the federal grant regulations. All of the other funding has either already been contractually obligated, has already been approved by council to come out of ARPA. So we're, we're working through, making sure all of those are cleaned up as well. But this was one that we had some additional money we needed to obligate and we wanted council to take that through a formal action. So any questions?
Things are great idea. Motion.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Tackett, second made by Ms. Hamburg. Are there further questions and or comments? One thing I want to say that, you know, when they came with this idea about, about putting a walking park over in the Ed Davis. As you know, there's not very many sidewalks in there over in that area. So we thought would be very beneficial for them to have that as part of their community and I think it's worthwhile. So that's why we brought this up and that's why we brought this council for approval. Are there any further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, the MOU with Georgetown Scott County Parks and Rec for ARPA funding, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item C Municipal Order, Microsoft GCC License and Relative Services.
Yes. This is something that we talked about at the budget amendment in October. We've talked about it at the finance committee level. So this is something, number one, for procurement, we were able to utilize the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing that council approved. Only certain retailers can sell the Microsoft Government GCC Licensing, stands for Government Community Cloud. And C1, which is a vendor we already work with through our phone system, is a partner or authorized selling agent under one of the Omnia contracts. So that's the procurement piece. And then the monthly recurring costs have already been included in the budget through the amendment that you did in October. But after that amendment was presented, I was made aware from our IT that there is a one time cost to build what's called a tenant, where kind of all the licenses live. So there are some professional services, they're covered under the same procurement contract, but it's, it's a one time cost of 84,000 to build that. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best to fill those and-
And a motion please.
Yes.
I just see the memorandum, I don't see the-
Oh, okay, it was emailed out today, but I'll share the one I've got. I apologize, you probably didn't get a chance. There was a note in there, can you all just pass that around?
Is this it? Stacy?
Yes.
Is this it?
That may be the-
It's the one I printed off?
That looks like it, it's very, yes. So it was emailed this morning. Was that called in? And it was posted this Friday.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second made by Ms. Tackett. Do I have any further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the municipal order, Microsoft GCC License and Relative Services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Next, Item D Municipal Order for Lord, is it Alec Sergeant Contract Amendment?
I say at, yes, or not sergeant.
And, and for construction administration, okay.
Elizabeth mentioned this in her presentation, so if you have any additional questions, we'll discuss that. Again, at the timing of when the packet went out, we had included the engineering services for the fire department connection. Again, once Elizabeth confirms whether or not those additional engineering services are needed, if they're not, then the contract will be for a lesser amount. So the mayor won't sign the contract until we have a final decision on whether those services are needed. So this is the maximum that you would have for that, if it needs to include those additional engineering services.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brandt. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, Lord, Sergeant Contract Amendment for Construction Administration, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item E Municipal Order, City Hall Change Order Number Four.
And this was the first one that Elizabeth talked about. Again, this is about a 2,900, 2,009, 49, 20 cents, and this will be funded by GMWSS. This is to change what would have been a regular water fountain or drinking fountain to one that includes a bottle filler. GMWSS is going to pay for this change order and put their logos on the stations, so.
I'll motion.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Conway, second by Ms. Brandt. Are there further questions and or comments?
Have a comment.
Okay, go.
I'd just like to thank you, Elizabeth, for all the hard work because I know that it's an iconic building and I know it had a lot of stuff going on with it. But I appreciate everything that you've done to your company and everything because it does look good and I know it's been pretty hard, actually, it was a big task. So thank you very much.
Thank you, it's definitely been a challenge, but I've enjoyed working with all of you all.
Well, you have to love it, you have to have a passion.
All right.
You're good at it.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, in the municipal order?
Yes.
The paragraph referencing the change in leaving contingency 5% in the amount of 599,919. Are we, I mean, are we still on track to keep that contingency or?
I'll ask Elizabeth to come up, obviously she mentioned a few other change orders.
I'm wanting to know where we're at on that contingency.
So I think we have the AV change order, which right now, we just had a meeting last week to resolve some questions on that. So we're looking at that coming down from what we thought it was going to be, which is good. And then we have the other change order that we mentioned that we think will be a credit. And then the fire department connection, based on the meeting we had today, will be much smaller than we had intended. So will that 599 stay at 599 after all of those? No, I unfortunately cannot tell you where we will be, but we are trying to be as efficient as we can with all of the changes. We're trying to see where we can make adjustments, where we have trade offs, so that we can try to keep that as low as possible. I do think, once we get through these, again, we have that one change order that I mentioned, it's sort of a reconciliation where we've made some changes throughout construction, we've swapped ceiling types, we've eliminated some things that, that we didn't need, found an alternative solution for it. I, I really think that that, I'm gonna, let me knock on someone here. I think that will actually be the, the last thing that we have provided anything else, you know, major happening, so.
Just one, one other quick question. You mentioned the, that the water mitigation looks pretty good right now, but you won't know for sure until you tear up the front sidewalk.
Right.
Is, could that impact it at all? If you find something there?
Yes and no. It, that is going to depend on, on what we find and what the alternative solutions are. For instance, the best solution, if we, if we tear into that and there's something down there, the best solution is to excavate that whole thing and put waterproofing on the outside. That is an astronomical change, which I don't know we would have the tolerance for at this point. And I don't even know budget numbers of what that would be, but when you're talking about a small distance and excavating down 12 feet, it's, it's not a small undertaking. So that is the best way to mitigate it. We typically don't like to do coatings on the interior side because you're still letting water, like water will still move through the building and then we want to make sure it's, it's staying out. Are there other solutions we can look at that might be an interior solution? Yes, which wouldn't be as big of, of an undertaking as excavating that whole thing out. We may dig into that and find that there's nothing down there or that maybe we just go back with some different soil types, maybe we put some gravel in there, something to let the water filter. So that's sort of that kind of medium in between. So, yes, there could be the potential for something, but we may be able to offset that with some other things so that it's not as big of a change.
All right.
I got a question for Stacy, did we know the cost on FFD and will that be a budget amendment?
We have not done quotes on that yet, I'll make a note, that can be something we can, obviously I'm working with them and I haven't been asked to go get pricing on that. Obviously, our first priority is going to be public facing spaces such as council chambers. As far as office furniture, we still have all our office furniture we can take back with us if we need to. But the public facing, you know, spaces would be our first priority in, in anything there and I'll, we'll work on that, getting some prices, I don't have pricing right now.
And I'd like to also say thank you to GMWSS for picking up the cost on that.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, you get to put your name on it, that's pretty good. Some good PR for you.
Educational information as well. Chase is, Chase is on the case.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions and or comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, municipal order, City Hall Change Order Number Four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our grant administrator, Karen Leverance, who's going to come up. A resolution is VAWA, I guess that's the Violence Against Women's Grant Fund. I think this is something that we get every year and so this is a reoccurring grant that we apply for. And we've been very successful getting that. It's very, very helpful to our police department as they try to combat this violence against women in, not just in Georgetown, but in our nation.
So the current award is $54,162 and there will be a local match of $18,055 to continue an ongoing program. Motion, Mayor.
Motion. Okay, wait, let's move one time, okay, we're about, we're about to talk one time. Like a teacher, okay, Ms. Hamburg has got the first shot, made by her, second by Ms. Conway. All right, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the resolution for the VAWA grant funding, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item B Resolution, the Liability Grant Funds, and this comes from, I think, KLC where we go in and if they find out we're doing some cost cutting things to, for safety or anything else, we can actually get a grant funding refund of up to $3,000. So that is something that we're going to continue to do to, to help offset a lot of things that, with that, it's not a big amount, but any amount you can get is, is a good amount. So I need a motion?
Motion. Split down the middle.
Nobody says anything.
Well, I mean, when we're getting money, when we're getting money, we should probably want to do that, jump on that grid. So Mr. Allen is motion, second by Ms. Tackett. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the resolution, liability grant funds, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item 15 Human Resources, Ms. Megan, Megan Anne, come on up. And first reading of the amendment to the Personnel Ordinance, sponsors Sony, Winkin Brent and Todd Stone. And I'll let you queue it up, I think.
Sure thing, it's just a first reading, but I'll go ahead and give you a synopsis of what this change has been put in front of you to do. First of all, in the fire inspector position, moving that from a grade 309 to a grade 310, we've had this spot open for a bit now and we, we only got one applicant. And we start to look at, you know, what have we, what do we have going on here that might not be enticing our individuals to want to go into this spot? And one thing we did realize is that it used to be graded the exact same as a captain and in this personnel ordinance, it's graded one step below. So we were hoping to bring that back in line with the captain position as it used to be. And then the change for code enforcement is simply to replace one of our code enforcement officers with a senior code enforcement officer title. So that we can promote employee morale and promote succession in our department so that we get folks who are able to climb a career ladder. It definitely helps folks want to stay in our positions longer and give them some reward for being a, a long-term employee. Similar thing in telecommunications, that position would eliminate one telecommunicator, but make that telecommunicator spot a shift supervisor. Brian in the, the communications center has moved to 12 hour shifts. So just having the three supervisors isn't giving him all the coverage that he needs in certain areas. So to have that fourth one would tremendously help him in coverage with supervision and provide, again, a career path for more employees.
All right. I need a motion?
No, it's the first reading.
Oh, first, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Adornance Committee, Section 2-60 of the Code Of Orders Regarding Personnel, Summary, One, Amends a Civic Fee, Section 2-60, Subtle of the C of the Code Of Orders, is to change the position of Fire Inspector from grade 309 to grade 10. Create the position of Senior Code Enforcement Officer at grade 111, decrease the number of Code Enforcement Officer positions from two to one, eliminate the position of Administrative Assistant One within the Fire Department, to increase the number of Shift Supervisor positions from three to four, and to decrease the number of Telecommunicator positions from 20 to 19 within the Telecommunications Department. And decrease the number of telecommunicator positions from 20 to 19 within the telecommunication department. Sheep, for bachelor appeal, the consistent ordinances, severability of permissions and effective date of passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk office, 629 North Broadway, 40344, or at www.gorkhampey.com. Introduced in public through rent for the first time since midnight in 2026.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Since we're gonna have a special call meeting, do you think it would be okay if we did this too?
Yes, I don't think that...
Well, okay. Great minds think alike.
Yeah, we're gonna, go ahead. Since we're gonna have that second, the special call meeting, we can add this item on there for that second reading at that time. That way, we can knock it off at that time. I was about to tell you.
Who's reading my mind? That's scary.
Yeah, well, you know what? That's what good mayor does. All right, now.
That's perfect. Thank you.
So, all right, let's move right on. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next, we have the police, item 16, municipal order for the Bearcat.
I just wanted to talk on the budget piece of this, because this was kind of the final piece of that email that I sent you. And again, since we are using ARPA funds to cover 286,000 of our Marshall Park improvements, that frees up that 286,000 in the general fund, that, if Council so chooses tonight, can be used to fund the purchase of the Bearcat. And we would just need to make up an additional 79,000 in the next budget amendment. So, I just wanted to speak about that from a budget standpoint. So, if you have any questions about the numbers, go ahead and ask me. And again, I'll defer to Assistant Chief Nash on the equipment itself.
I need a motion?
No. You want to tell us about the Bearcat?
Yes, I do. Okay.
So, we spoke with the Police Committee, was it last Monday?
It was.
On the benefits of what this vehicle would offer us. So, currently, we have a 1991 Ford bank truck that we obtained from Lexington Metro back in 2006. We have tried to maintain that vehicle the best we can, and right now, it's either at its end of life or it's very close to end of life, and we do not feel comfortable using that. So, it has been put in our backlog. We no longer use that due to some mechanical issues. We also have a Humvee, but they can only carry four people at a time, and it's not very practical in some situations. The purpose of asking for the Bearcat, the Linco Bearcat, is a, it's an armored vehicle that is used by police across the nation. It benefits us in a sense of, it provides officer safety. It allows us some versatility in when we're responding to calls, such as armed barricade standoffs or hostage situations, God forbid, active shooter situation and natural disasters, if that is something we can use it for. For the community standpoint, it allows us to have a rapid response. So, we can respond to calls quicker. We can deal with those calls quicker. Our current bank truck, when we use it on a barricaded subject, we have to keep it in the roadway. Doesn't provide much protection for the officers that have to go up to the door. We also don't have the ability to safely extract people from their houses or from a building if we need to. And this piece of equipment would allow us to provide a barrier to basically keep civilians safe if we were needing to extract them, or even put them in the vehicle and move them to a safe location. Like I said, this vehicle is used across the United States, not just for police, but it's also used for fire, natural disaster incidents that happen across the United States. Other than that, if you have questions, I can, what is it?
Have you applied for a grant for this?
Oh, we have applied for a grant. I'm sorry. I forgot about that.
Thank you for refreshing.
So, for the, for about six years, we've applied for the Homeland Security Grant. We have been denied every single time. We thought we had a very good chance this past year for this budget year with a letter from Councilman Bar, or Congressman Bar, but we were denied as well. I spoke to the mayor and Ms. Hambrik about talking with the Homeland Security Grant advisors, who told me that they would not be issuing out Bearcat grants. They will not give funding for a Bearcat in this grant funding line. I don't know of another line to ask for a grant. I've talked to several jurisdictions around central Kentucky. Most of them have either paid for their vehicle out of ARPA funds or out of their general budget fund.
Thank you for that refresher. I appreciate it.
That's right.
Make a motion?
I'll second it. Alonso can have it.
No, go ahead. You can do the motion.
You sure?
Okay, let's do a motion first, okay? Motion made by Ms. Hambrik, second by...
Alonso.
I was gonna ask a question, but I'm second.
Okay.
Second, didn't you answer your question? All right, so, second, Ms. Allen. Now, are there questions and or comments? Now, you go ahead.
Is this a new vehicle or repurposed?
This is a brand-new vehicle.
That's exciting.
I might say that, at the Police Committee, we had a longer presentation. It was very informative. Looked at pictures, discussed this at length. And, you know, with the drones that we have given permission to purchase, and this vehicle, I think we have added significantly to protecting our police force, our fire, but as well, citizenry, because this can also de-escalate situations, which is just as important. So, I think this is a good use of our ARPA funds, and I think we will find benefit from it.
Are there any further comments and or questions? All those in favor of the municipal order for the Bearcat, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. You got your new toy.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Very expensive.
Yes. Thank you all.
Now, municipal order for surplus.
So, we have, we have given a long list of surplus items. Some of that stuff is just things that we no longer use, like toolboxes. I had the list on my phone. If I need to go through it. We have some toolboxes on there, a couple coffee makers that are, we're not using. So, we're gonna surplus those. But the other equipment that's listed out is the older drones. Since we are going to be getting the new, the new drones, we're going to surplus the drones that we have. Some of them are in, still in operable condition, but there's batteries and different accessories that we're gonna option off as well.
There's a whole list right here.
Yes. All right, need a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Tackett.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for municipal order for surplus of supplies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. All right.
Thank you.
At this time, council comments, and I'm going to start with Ms. Hambrik.
Wow. Merry Christmas to everybody. I'm thankful for many things, but feel particularly blessed and humbled by being able to represent the city, but also feel a loss of, it's a sea change. Four people will no longer be with us, and I'm excited to obviously have four new people come on. But we have a lot of experience, and we have a lot of people who have given heart and soul to city government. And Alonso and Millie and Connie and Mark, you will be very much missed, and your work and service to the community very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hapton?
Thank you, ma'am. You know, the same thing here. I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. You know, as we look forward, you know, I think we've got, we've got, still have challenges ahead of us, but I think we've got everything in place that we can take care of those. To the ones leading us, again, it has been an absolute honor to serve around City Council. Wish every one of you, Connie, I know we'll see you.
Thank you. Yeah, we will.
I know we'll see, I know I'll see you. Yeah, it's been an honor. Millie, again, thank you. It's been nice. And, question, Mark, it's been nice over the years. So, the ones coming on, look forward to it, to actually new faces and then to the people on our board. So, I think we've got, you know, got a good group. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brent?
I just want to say to each and every one of you all, thank you for the past, I'm gonna go just two years. And to say two years, I've got to know each and every one of you all, and you helped me out coming on the council. I'm excited to serve another two years, but I appreciate all the friendships, and I'm gonna stay in touch with each and every one of you all. That's all I have. Merry Christmas.
All right. I'm gonna say something before I give it to the last three people here, and let them have their last four. Oh, yeah. You have a going here? I mean, so, I want to just say something before I turn it over to these last four people. It has been an honor. In two years, you know, you learn a lot. I'm gonna tell you why. You learn a lot about government that I did not know, and that, you know, doing government work is slow. Government is slow, and it's sometimes frustrating, but you keep on the fight of that. And I think what we try to do is listen the best we can to the people that we serve. Ms. Tackett and Mr. Sherwood, who've been one of the two longest-serving council persons on, for the city. We're talking about, what, 26, 27 years combined? That is, that is a large amount of service. We want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Because I know there's times you, it can be difficult, but I'm glad to see that you continue to fight the fight. And for Ms. Conway and Mr. Allen, again, thank you all. I think you all have added a different dimension to this council, which is much time is needed. You know, you don't want people to do the same thing all the time. You want to see people come up with some fresh, new ideas that also that. So, that being said, I want to thank you all. Personally, thank you two, as well, the two senior citizens for this group.
Easy killer.
We will probably be on Medicare by the time I get there. But I'll leave it at that, and then I'll let, I'll let Mr. Allen go first, and then Ms. Conway.
All right. This last two years have definitely been a learning experience. I know Emily will attest to that. I've learned a lot. I've made some mistakes along the way, but my heart has always been in the right place, and that's the citizens. You'll probably have some shorter meetings with my absence, so you're looking forward to that. One thing I definitely want to leave this council, new council with, is the business park. And I've just made some comments. I'll just read from this. The city needs to take the lead to look for opportunities to establish a business park. We can't wait on another entity to do that. We need the recurring revenue. So, my charge is that the city takes the lead in this opportunity. And the public-private partnership, or three Ps is one method, where all parties win. The landowner can sell or lease the property, thus obtaining revenue. And the city and county gain revenue from the business taxes. So, there's different methods of doing a business park, and I want you guys just to think outside the box, because we have to make that happen to get the recurring revenue, to do the other things that are needed. So, please continue to look at that KPPI funding. There'd be another opportunity there. So, with the city and county partnering with someone in a three P activity, city and county can bring funding to that project for infrastructure costs. And again, the landowner can either sell property or lease property, and I think that sets up win-win opportunities. It's been interesting coming around into council and dealing with wastewater. Chase, thank you so much for leading us through that. I probably, while you're having a lot of phone calls and just questions, but you helped educate me on this community deeper, and I appreciate, I appreciate all that you've given me there. City Hall, I know, was a big challenge, and it will be, I will be, have a feeling of being proud whenever that's finished, and to, you know, go inside of that. Hopefully, we'll do some community tours.
Absolutely.
And let the community see where their tax dollars are going to. I know there were a lot of community members that didn't want to do that, but that was needed. And that's, you know, downtown historical building that we need to take care of. And I'm proud to say that we stepped up and did that. Emily, thank you for your support. Madam Clerk, you can take back, share the joy any time. Thank you for your activities. Stacy, it's been a pleasure working with you. And Megan, everybody that's supported me. So, it felt like the Academy Awards. Everybody on council, man.
You ready for your golden glove now?
My mom, my dad, no, everybody that has supported me. I know I wore you guys years out, and we were time out. So, and Mayor, thank you for your support as well. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. And you are leaving, right? No, I'm, I'm just kidding. All right. Ms. Conway?
Okay. In 2014, I had two passions when I decided to run for City Council. One was perp side recycling, which was near and dear to me, and I felt like Georgetown is too big a town to not take benefit of that and not to appreciate that opportunity. The other thing was safe sidewalks on West Main Street and wherever else they're needed. So, that, those two things are probably the reason I ran, they are the reason I ran, for City Council. And it has been a privilege and an honor. And I'm such a set to be your City Council member, to help Georgetown and to help the citizens be safe here. And I am counting on Eddie Hightower. Hubbly Glee is in front of everybody.
Careful.
For 10 years, this has been important to me, and you say it's finally gonna happen. And I'm confident that you will get it there, and I want to be updated. I want you to call me and let me know how things are going, because I know it takes a while. Phase one took four years. I was in the council, on the council for four years and off before phase one started. And then, I decided to come back again and keep pushing for it. And I really appreciate being on the council with all of you all.
That's not least, man. Thank you so much. All right, next, I'm gonna...
Mayor. Kind of...
Yep. Go right ahead.
I live in a world where ladies go first, but Connie's the senior council member, so I think we save the best for last.
All right.
Connie and I started together.
Okay, well, I'll let you go now, since you're talking.
And I apologize.
No, go ahead.
We started together. Connie's, this, this will be the end of, be 16 years, and I've done 14. I set out one term, otherwise, we would possibly be in 16. But anyway, to each of you, thank you. I've learned a lot from each of you, Mayor. We've had the honor of working for four different mayors, and I think 21 or 22 different City Council members. And multiple department heads, multiple city, or two city clerks. I'm sorry. I shouldn't say multiple, two. And I tell you, it's, our city employees are truly special.
Yes, they are.
And when I say city employees, that means retired city employees and also current city employees. They truly are special. They are the backbone of the city, whether it's Public Works decorating downtown, Christmas lights, police officers. Lieutenant Moore, I've been thinking of all the city employees, with the exception of Stacy's, that's on this side of the room, whose job I want to have, and I think it's yours. And it takes a special person to do what you do, and also the members of your team. Eddie, thank you. I don't want to leave anybody out, but, I mean, it's, our city employees are truly the backbone. And it's been an absolute honor. I'm trying not to look at Tammy, and I'm trying not to look at Connie.
Okay, I won't look at you.
Otherwise, I'm not gonna make it through this. I think the future is bright for this city. I truly do. And to be quite honest, I look forward to two more years. It will be here before you know it. I look forward to it, and thank you so much.
All right. Now, last but not least, okay?
First of all, I want to say thank you very much to the constituents that put me into office. It's been humbling, and it's, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity that I've had. I want to, I want to share some funny news, too. When I first got on council, I didn't know what I was, what I was getting into, as we all do when you first get on. But my first two years, we played donkey basketball at Georgetown College. Does anybody remember that? See how old I am? So, that was challenging, because you cannot make a basket on the... So that was challenging, because you cannot make a basket on the back of a donkey, but you can't even stay on the back of the donkey. Um, just all of the different, the, the people that I've met, the relationships that I've had, the friendships that I'm going to walk away with, the people that I've worked with, they're just top-notch. I would be remiss to even try to name everybody that I've built relationships with and friendships, and I'm very grateful for that. And I do want to tell the mayor that I have signed up for Medicare, and I'm just waiting on Part C and Part D.
I'm already on it.
And then the other thing I want to say is that, you know, it was surreal, um, on that night of, um, when election was happening, and for the first probably 24 hours, I was pretty upset, and I cried about it, and I was like, wow, I'm really going to miss this, you know? And I am, but this next year will be a good time for healing and doing things that I need to do for my family, and I've had a lot of support from people here for that as well, and I'm very grateful. And so one of the things that just really resonated in my spirit and my soul, and I just want to share that before I say bye, is that Jeremiah 29:11 is my favorite verse, and this is what it says, "For I know the plans I have for you, says the Lord, they are plans for good and not for disaster, to give you a future and a hope." And I believe that, and I stand on that, and I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and have a happy, blessed New Year. I'll be back. No, I'm kidding.
Okay. After that, if no more business, this meeting is adjourned. I'll be back. Arnold, yes, you be like Terminator, she be coming, she gonna be rolling.